Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March 5th Tuesday Board Meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order and I need a motion to go into closed session and to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursued of North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A3 to discuss personnel matters protected by state law. Chad makes the motion at a second. Paul, all in favor? We are now in closed session. We are now reconvening March the 5th regular Davie County School Board Meeting. Just a reminder, there are a few seats around the corner here and you will be able to see the meeting and hear the meeting because it is videotaped over there also. So we hope that if you're standing, if you want to move around, please do so. At this time, I would like to have the invocation, please. We have gathered tonight to build a future for Davie County that we love. We ask each member of this board to be mindful of the business we are about to undertake. We are thankful for everyone in attendance this evening. Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to govern and the freedoms that we enjoy. We pause to remember the students, faculty members, and families in our system who are facing challenges. Our positive thoughts are always with this group and as well as others. And as always, we seek wisdom to make the best decisions for the students and the citizens of Davie County. Peace be with you. We have a very, very special treat today. We have the Daisy Girl Scout troop from United Methodist Church. Ms. Kelly is their leader and she has brought them with us to lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Okay, since you're holding the flag, I'm gonna let her hold it, okay? And y'all all speak toward it, okay? Ready, start. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was fantastic, just super. Thank you for coming. And we thank their leaders also. Thank you so much. Hang on, my computer button. All right. Ta-da, back. Technology, I love it. Next, we are going to adopt our agenda and I will need a motion for that. But before we begin, I do want to share with the public that normally our public comment comes after our business items, but since the business items, we have so much interest in our county for that, we chose to move public comment before business items. And normally, it does come afterwards, but we decided to move it before so that we could hear more from the public. So with that being said, I need a motion to approve the minutes for, I'm sorry, to approve the agenda for our March 5th meeting. Wendy makes the motion. Second by Chad. All in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Next is to approve the minutes of February the 5th. I need a motion to approve the February 5th minutes. Do I have that motion? Chad? I have a second by Carol. Is there any discussion, any additions or anything? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of February 5th minutes to approve? Please show your hands. Seven zero. Thank you. Move to the board reports. And I will share two things before I do the board dates. I want to thank Dorothy Graham and the Senior Services of Davie County for hosting the Black History Month Celebration on February the 27th. The stand chapter from Davie High School with the entertainment, and they were awesome. Also, the moving comments from Mr. Suter during that event. If you've never had the opportunity to go, you really do need to go see that. It's very heartwarming and very moving. Also, too, last week, our 4H group had their Academy Oscar Awards, also at the Senior Service Building. And I want to thank them for all the children who participated in that. And their awards were very interesting and very creative and we thoroughly enjoyed that. So I do want to say thank you to those. Our important dates are: Today, we have a board meeting. And on Thursday evening, we'll be visiting Shady Grove for the advisory councils from William Ellis, Conenser, and Shady Grove. Also, on the 14th, we will have lunch and tour Coolamie Elementary School. Battle of the Books for the Middle School is on the 25th. That's at Davie Public Library. And the 26th is the Elementary Battle of the Books at 6 o'clock in the evening, and that will be at the Davie High School Media Center. On April the 9th, we will have our school board meeting because we do have spring break that first week in April. So April the 9th will be our next school board meeting. And as always, you can go on our website and look at our calendar of events so you can see where the board is traveling to and all the events that we have the opportunity to attend. It's also amazing to me that it's March and you can look at our calendar and see April and May already completely full. So with that, I am going to turn the agenda over to our superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's great to see everyone out tonight. February was a short month, but we had a full agenda. I want to thank Barbara and Wendy and Clint for joining me at lunch at Ellis Middle School. Also, we started our meetings last week with our parent advisory councils. I want to thank Barbara, Chad, Carol, Clint, and Wendy for meeting with our parent councils at Pine Brook, North Davie, and William R. Davie. I think this is something unique about our board, and I appreciate them doing this as every spring, we'll go out and spend four evenings talking with parent advisory councils. And anytime that we can meet with students at lunch and staff at lunch and our parents in the evenings, it really helps us to better make decisions to benefit the school district. So appreciate the board taking time out of their busy schedules to make that possible. I attend a number of meetings across each month, but the last month and last week was a unique one I want to share with you. Speaker Tom Tillis from the North Carolina House of Representatives, he's our Speaker of the House, did something that speakers in the past has not done. And he invited all the superintendents from across the state to come down to Raleigh and have a conversation with him in the Legislative Chamber. And Speaker Tillis spent over two hours with the superintendents. There were 70 of us who came down and we talked about issues, everything from tax credits and vouchers of public money going toward private education, calendar flexibility, funding issues and regulations, teacher tenure, charter schools, the A through F grading system, and various other policy issues that are being debated in the legislature. And I want to say publicly, thank you to Speaker Tillis for taking time to listen and to share and to reach out to superintendents across the state. It was a unique experience in that he asked us to come into the legislative chambers and he asked us to sit in the seat of our local representative. So a physics lesson, or excuse me, a civics lesson would be how many representatives are there in the North Carolina House? There are 120. So there are 120 seats in the room. And your seat is determined by your tenure or your experience level in the House. So I was fortunate enough to go down to seat number one and sit where Julia Howard sits, who has the most experience of any of our House of Representatives. And she has been good to this community. So it was a neat experience and a very healthy conversation between superintendents and legislature. And I hope that that will continue as we go through this legislative session. And I had a chance to visit with Representative Howard and Senator Brock while I was down there. I want to recognize one of our staff tonight that's not on our recognition list and it's not with a certificate, but all of you who know this person know how much hard work he does, and that's Mr. Todd Naylor. He's our Transportation Director. I received, very proud. Todd just does a phenomenal job, and I don't know how many of you know how early Todd comes in, but there are times he wakes me up, we talk about the weather. This morning, he was texting me about an accident that rerouted three of our buses. But Todd is just always on the spot. And I received a notification from DPI a few weeks ago that Davie County was one of only 50, one out of 50 applicants in the state that received $50,000 in federal EPA rebate monies. Todd had filled out an application and his application was selected. And Davie County Schools was the only school district in North Carolina to receive $50,000 toward replacing two of our 1994 school buses. Now, that wasn't a direct monetary benefit to Davie County, but that was $50,000 of federal monies that came to our state and not somewhere else. And it's because of Todd's efforts that two of our buses will be replaced on an accelerated cycle. So it's employees like Todd that go above and beyond the call of duty to make things happen that we really appreciate it. We're seeing a lot of conversations and trends in education about school choice, and I want to share something with you tonight. There are a lot of those conversations going around the state, especially people in communities where they don't feel like they have a quality choice for public education in their community. I want you to know that in Davie County, we have excellent academic choices for our students. And one fine example of that happened this past weekend. I don't know if any of you read the Winston-Salem Journal over the weekend, but I want to congratulate the Science Olympiad team from North Davie Middle School for coming in first place in the Northwest Regional Science Olympiad Tournament. They outperformed students from schools in our region from Forsyth County and a charter school from Surrey County. So again, another example of how traditional public education is working here in Davie County. On top of that, I want to congratulate the Science Olympiad team from Davie County High School who also earned first place. Out in front of a science and technology school from Forsyth County, five other high schools in Forsyth, two from Davidson, one from Yadkin, one from Surrey. All these students from the high school will be again traveling to state competition in April for their fourth year in a row. So our traditional public schools are a tremendous return on investment in Davie County. And when you see these students, see the teachers that are dedicated to making these opportunities available for our students, please tell them congratulations and thank you. Last thing I want to share with you tonight is if any of you have visited the Davie County Schools website, and I'd ask our staff to pull that up for you right quick. Yesterday, we unveiled a new district website. And this new website went live yesterday morning. And I want to thank Mary Orr. Mary, will you stand? You'll see Mary around quite a bit. I'll embarrass her. I want to thank Mary for all of her hard work in making the transition from our district website to this new site. It's about 80% completely populated with our data. We're in the process of migrating over all of our data from the old site to this new one. But I think that you will find it to be a very user-friendly site and full of exciting news. There's some news that I just shared a few minutes ago about the Science Olympiad. But I hope it'll be a good resource for news around the district. And again, board, this just is another tool for us to better communicate with our students, parents, and community. And Mary, again, thank you for all your dedication and hard work to make that happen. I'm going to ask Mary if she will in April to come and give us a tour of the site. Madam Chair, that's my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd and Mary both for outstanding. And the team for technology. Just keep moving forward. That's great. Now, on our agenda, it is time for our board recognitions, and I would like for Dr. Karpner to please come forward for the spelling bee.
Gentlemen of the board, members of the staff, members of the community, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to come up and recognize some students from one of my very favorite activities of the whole year. We had the spelling bee last month, and we are here to crown our champions. Spelling bee is one of my all-time favorite things to do. I love the tension in the air and the competition, and it's always a great event. I would like to thank our sponsors. We do have some corporate sponsors who make our bee very special by providing some gift cards for our students and for the folks who participate. Like to thank Venetius Family Restaurant, the Davie County Enterprise, Reynolds American, and BB&amp;T for their sponsorship. And here to introduce our three winners, we have their principals, who will call them up and embarrass them in front of the general public and shake their hands. So to introduce our third place winner, who is Rachel Jordan, we have Ms. Marsh from Moxville Elementary.
Let me introduce this amazing fifth grade student. This is Rachel Jordan, and she is in Ms. Tammy Essex's fifth grade class at Moxville Elementary. And you will get to meet the other two spellers who are in middle school. So we are amazing elementary school. And we are, that is so amazing. And I have to tell you one special thing about Rachel is that her grandma says that the only thing that she does better than spelling is she plays the piano. So we're very proud of Rachel. Congratulations.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to present Rachel this certificate for her accomplishments.
And introducing Lily Butterfield from North Davie Middle School is Ms. Custer.
Lily is one of our wonderful seventh graders at North Davie who works very hard and very diligently at gymnastics and her fashion and lots of style. So we enjoy Lily and what she brings to North Davie. And I know her parents are very proud of her, as we are too, and we thank them for sharing her with us. Congratulations.
Lily, on behalf of the board, I'd like to present you this certificate for your hard work.
Thank you.
And finally, Ms. Holman will introduce our champion, Lane Timodeski.
I would like to introduce Lane Timodeski. And Lane is an eighth grader at Ellis Middle School and seventh grader at Ellis Middle School, and he's the only child. And Lane told me that one day he would like to be a pilot like his father. He told me that he was going to miss the meeting tonight because he had another meeting, but that's at 6:30. But we're proud of Lane, and we want to congratulate Lane for being the county winner, and we want to give him kudos and wish him luck in the state.
Before I present him, I want to see if anybody can spell his last name. Congratulations, Lane.
Congratulations to all the winners. That's a lot of hard work. Elizabeth Phillips, a very special presentation this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Harkness and community members, I have a very special announcement tonight, a very special recognition. We have a remarkable young lady at Davie High School who, a few fun facts about her, she is a twin. She can tap, dazz, and ballet dance. Her favorite color's pink. She not only listens to all kinds of music, she likes to change her hair color often. Girl after my own heart. And not only all of these things, she is a world-class athlete. This student won a gold medal in Special Olympics World Winter Games in South Korea Ms. Stephanie Jamie. Thank you. Not only did she win the gold medal that she has on, she won another medal, fourth-place Alpine Novice Super G, which I have no idea what it is. And fifth-place Alpine Novice Giant Slalom. Sounds pretty tough. So we want to congratulate you. We're very, very proud of you. Davie County is proud of you. The school district is. And I wanted to show a quick clip of what was on the news on Channel 12 about Jamie for just a second here, if I can get this to work. And then she has a few words that she'd like to say. All right. Hold on. Oh, here it is. This is your TV debut.
I feel happy. Happy.
Stephanie Jamie and her twin sister Jennifer are on top of the world. In early February, Stephanie won a gold medal in the slalom event at this year's Special Olympics World Winter Games in Pyeongchang, South Korea.
Team USA, Stephanie.
Wow. That's heavy.
Great job.
That's what everybody says to you?
Yes.
Go, Stephanie, go.
Were you cheering loud?
Yes.
Was everybody cheering loud?
Yeah.
The girls, who are 19 years old, have autism. That's a brain development disorder that can present itself in a variety of ways, but often makes communication and socialization challenging. Just to compete, Stephanie had to travel to a different continent with her new teammates. She only got to see her family a few times and for just a few hours. But everyone can't stop talking about the hospitality and how sincerely complete strangers from foreign countries would cheer for her. Since they've all been back in Moxville, Angie and Scott Jamie have noticed incredible changes in both girls.
Expressing wonderful feelings and independence and, yes, I can do this.
It was a thrill to watch her get up there and know that she did her best and that she enjoyed doing it.
Come on, Stephanie!
As a parent, just knowing that both of our girls were supportive of each other and they absolutely were so proud of each other, I've never been more proud of them.
Stephanie Jamie, her story is as good as gold, and she's this week's Flow Athlete of the Week.
Now, she has... Is it right there? Nope, that wasn't it. Okay.
Ready?
Ready. She's going to tell you a little bit about her trip to South Korea.
I said goodbye to my grandparents. I went to Charlotte to spend the night before I left for Los Angeles. Here is North Carolina's Special Olympics team. We are all excited to begin our adventure. I am about to leave my family and begin my journey with Team USA. I am so happy. I walked the red carpet feeling like a superstar in LA. Here is Team USA at the host village in Seoul. I ate soup and rice. Everyone in the village was so friendly. I saw the tight-rope backroats in the folk village. It was very exciting. These are the families in the host village. We are at the Korean International School. They had a reception to welcome us. The cheerleaders welcomed us to their school. They said, "Go, Team USA." We went to the military base in Seoul. We ate with the soldiers. I was sure to thank them for their service to our country. Here is the Alpencia Village where Team USA stayed. My hotel is in the upper right-hand side. My room was nice. There was even a Domino's pizza. Here is Young Pyeongdong. It was the site of the opening and closing ceremonies. The Korean and Special Olympics flags were raised during the opening ceremonies. Here I am with Team USA and the Olympic flame. We saw it as snow a lot. I am so ready to do my best for Team USA. This is Young Pyeong Valley. We skied here every day. It was very beautiful but steep. This is me and Jennifer. She was my best cheerleader. I got a fourth-place ribbon on the first day of competition. It was great to get a hug from my dad and sister. This is one of the displays in the convention center. It celebrates Yoonae Schreiber and her contribution to Special Olympics. The motto for the Special Olympics Games was "Together We Can." This is Coach Andrea and me. She encouraged me to ski my very best. I got a fifth-place ribbon on the second day of competition. My sister added more members to my fan club in Korea. She even got the Korean Army to cheer for me. I got a gold medal and a big hug from Jennifer. I knew I could do my very best. During closing ceremonies, there were very inspirational slides. It made me proud of all the athletes, families, and coaches. We had all done our best for our countries. We saw a handbell performance that was fantastic. I saw Michelle Kwon and a beautiful ice skating performance. This is Nam Young Won. She was the chairperson responsible for a wonderful World Winter Games celebration in Pyeongchang. She handed the Special Olympic Games flag to the Los Angeles organizers in the 2015 Games. My sister is so proud of me. I love her very much. Steve, Pam, and Noah welcomed me home. Mom and Dad and Jennifer gave me lots of hugs and kisses. There were four TV station cameras filming our welcome-home celebration. This is Jake, one of the ski coaches, and me and Jennifer, red hair at last. I worked hard and skied my very best for Team USA. It was a wonderful ending to my South Korea adventure. I felt happy and loved with all the support from home. Gamsanbida, it means "thank you."
Oh, thank you. That's what, look at her. Standing ovation. You're supposed to shake your hands. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to change the color of my shirt, too. Stephanie on the back of her card that she handed out, I'm going to read you over that. It says, what her quote was, "I really want to make my family and my community proud." So congratulations, you've done it.
Congratulations. We're so proud of you. Mr. Wallace, Mr. Whitlock.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, board, and our community. Dr. Harkness, Ms. King, would you come on and bring your group in, please? You can just have them right here in the front would be great. Once again, it's my honor to have the opportunity to stand and present another one of our middle school teams that we, from the same school, was recognized not very long ago for something a perfect performance over a timeframe. And we have that opportunity again here tonight. And I'm going to allow our county athletic director, Mr. Barry Whitlock, to share some things about this team.
Thanks, Mr. Wallace. These young ladies stand up here along with their coach, Coach King, Coach Lowry. I had the opportunity to watch about six games of their season this year. And for those, I see some parents out there, and you know what I'm talking about. I've been going to middle school basketball games for about 27 years, and this is one of the best teams I've ever witnessed in middle school. They were regular season champions. They were regular season champions and also conference champions. And they finished 17-0. And I think that's only the second time in Davie County Middle School history that a team's won undefeated. So congratulations, coaches and players.
While this group's moving through, Coach Allen, if you want to... If y'all just want to come on in as they're peeling out, you can come through. Once again, another opportunity to recognize a group from North Davie. This is North Davie's wrestling team.
Coach Jamie Holt, Coach Timmy Allen, these guys had a... It was a tough season for them, for some things that happened, we losing Ron Kirk. These guys stepped up, and I know Coach Kirk's smiling down on you guys right now. But I'd like to congratulate these guys. They had eight conference champions out of 17 weight classes. And these three guys, or four guys right here, are conference champions. They also went undefeated, won the regular season, and won the conference tournament. Congratulations, North Davie Wrestling Team.
One more special recognition tonight. Mr. Caleb Mathis, if you would, come on up just a moment. Take a look at this fine young man. I had the opportunity to serve as his principal for almost five, excuse me, almost three years. And he's... It wasn't that bad, Caleb, really. When you have kids like him, you wish it'd be five years. A fine young man in the classroom, and he is more than a conference champion. I'm going to let Coach Whitlock explain that one to you as well.
We're here to recognize Caleb Mathis. Caleb is a state champion, number one, state champion, in the indoor 55-yard meter hurdles. And I talked to Coach Holman this week and said, "Coach, what's something I can say about him?" First thing out his mouth was, "He's always doing the right thing." I said, "Okay." So I talked to Coach Ealing, who coached me in football. Coach Ealing, what can I say about him? Caleb's always doing the right thing. And I know Caleb's going to do the right thing down at UNC Wilmington, where he was given a scholarship to continue his track career. So congratulations.
And Stephanie, congratulations, you as well. I was able to serve as your principal, too. Good job. Thank you. All right, I want to make one quick recognition. Last, at our last board meeting, obviously, we had our Director of Maintenance to retire. That was Mr. Tom Evans. We recognized him. And I didn't want to steal the show, but I do want to, that night, the board, of course, approved our new director, and we've changed the title, but Mr. Michael Spillman, one of our finest athletes here on our staff. Michael Spillman joined the Davie County School System in 1987. Michael has worked his way up through the ranks. And in 2001, he became the Assistant Director. And then in 2010, he was Assistant Director, and we added more to him, and he was Director of Facilities. And now, Michael is the Director of all of our maintenance and facilities. And his title is Director of Facilities. So I want you to, in Tom Evans' retirement, please welcome and show appreciation for Mr. Michael Spillman. Michael?
It is a proud day in Davie County. All those children exceeding and going that extra mile. From the daisies who did the pledge to each of the athletes and the spelling bee winners, on behalf of the board, we say thank you to each of you for working so hard to make a difference. We do appreciate that. Thank you so much. Now, on the agenda, it is time for our consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve all the consent agenda items as presented by the staff? Paul makes the motion. Do I have a second? Wendy seconds. Any discussion, any questions of any staff? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote to approve the consent agenda items as presented by the staff. All in favor? Seven zero. Thank you. Now, it is time for the public address to the board. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wilson. And as always, if there are some seats that are becoming available, if you would like to sit.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is so exciting. We are delighted to have so many people here to share their thoughts and ideas with the Davie County Board of Education. This is the time in our meeting every month where we ask the public to tell us what's on their minds. And we're interested in hearing from you. Here's the process that we'd like to follow tonight and every night, that we have the public comment session. I'm going to call two names. In fact, that I'll be in spring training in less than 10 days. We're going to say someone's in the box and the other person is on deck. Pitchers and catchers have already reported. And what we're going to do is, when you come to the microphone, if you will first, please give us your name and address. The reason we do that is sometimes what you say may require us to get in touch with you or respond to you in some fashion, and we want to know how to be able to contact you. So if you'll first state your name and address, you'll have five minutes. Now, I can't see it from where I am, but I can't imagine that you can't see that number from where you'll be, standing at the podium. Please don't make us gavel you down. Please try to discipline yourself to stay within that five minutes. It should be plenty of time to share with us whatever you'd like to do. Let me remind you, if you have a personnel matter or something about a student that's on your mind, Jeff Wallace, who's down at the end of our diass, would be happy to hear from you about things like that. That's not an appropriate thing to share in the public. We'd like to preserve the confidentiality of our folks. So if you have general comments, we're very excited to hear from you. And I'm going to try not to butcher any names. I can't promise you that I won't do a few little missteps, but I'm going to try really hard. So our first speaker, who will come up first, is Ron Keister, I hope, followed by Brad Chapman, who'll be on deck.
My name is Ron Keister. Thanks for getting it right. Usually, it's close. We retired here... Oh, my address. 101 Wood Park Drive, Moxville. Right downtown, back up to Ridge Park. We retired here in 2007. A few of the people here know me a little bit, know my university degrees are in accounting. CPA, I'm a certified internal auditor. I spent 35 years auditing. So their first thought is, he's going to talk either on accounting, finance, or auditing. Well, they're wrong. I'm going to talk on hope. My hope for the community, that we all work together for better community in these difficult financial times, that honesty and integrity prevails in Davie County, that transparency exists and elected in other community leaders, and that we always treat each other with respect, dignity, especially when we have disagreements. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Brad Chapman. On deck will be Carol Blankenship.
Brad Chapman, 130 Pine Valley Road, Moxville. My wife and I have three boys. Charlie is in the eighth grade at Ellis. Zeb is in the fourth grade at Cornancer. And Carsten is one and will be eventually attending Cornancer. I grew up in Kulumi, which is where my parents still live. I attended Kulumi Elementary School, South Davie, Davie High School, and have lived here all my life, with the exception of two months when Sarah and I first got married. We lived in Forsyth County. Otherwise, I've been a lifelong resident of Davie County. And through those times, I have many family members, actually some in this room, and many friends in this county. And it is very sad for me to see the division that has come across this county, basically through this school issue. So I'm here this evening to voice my opinion in support of one new high school for the county. And I understand the financial impact to the county and its residents that goes along with a new school and embarking on a new project such as this. But one important lesson that my parents taught me and my brother growing up in Kulumi was that you have to work hard and sacrifice to get ahead of the competition in life. And I feel like that our children, not just mine, but all the children in this county, deserve the sacrifice that we need to make to give them the opportunities to get ahead of their competition in life, whether that be them going to college or directly into the workforce. We need to make our sacrifices to give them the opportunity to... And the chances that this new school will provide for them. So I think several, over the 10 years or so that this issue has divided this county, it has gotten so far away from what's the heart of the issue, which is the kids. We need to bring the kids back to the forefront of this, and let's set a good example. And let's come together as a community. As I said earlier, it's very sad to see the division that this issue has brought amongst this county. And it's time to get this behind us and move forward and bring this community back together. To the board, thank you for your service to the community and the opportunity for me to come share my opinion with you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol Blankenship. She'll be followed by Ed Robertson.
Good evening. My name is Carol Blankenship, and I live at 175 Laurel Brook Lane Advance. I have been a taxpaying citizen of Davie County for over 10 years. I'm married, have two children, two boys. One attends Pine Brook Elementary, and another is enrolled at Macedonian Arabian Preschool. I love this county. I volunteer my spare time for this county and the children in it. I met my husband in this county. My children have been raised and will continue to be educated in this county. And I intend on living here for the rest of my life. The classroom is the most important area within any school. It is here that students spend most of their time, hopefully in an environment that is conducive to learning. Learning in the classroom requires a reasonable level of concentration, listening, writing, and reading. Students will prosper when the facilities they learn in meet the ever-changing requirements for education, health, safety, and security. I think it's safe to say that although a large portion of our high school students prosper, they do so in the face of adversity and in spite of the fact that their environment is not always up to par. We all want better for our children than even we have, that's a given. But as I lay last night with my four-year-old, reading the mantra on his wall, I couldn't help but think why all of us shouldn't be doing the same things. Play fair, love, share, help each other, stick together, always be kind and honest. As with everything else, as long as the average citizen thinks schools are doing well, apathy will continue to be pervasive. We all need to continue to inform each other and ourselves on the conditions at Davie High and appreciate the difference a new facility could make in educating our children and improving our community. I would like to also take this opportunity to personally thank Dr. Hartness and the Board of Education for all of their time, research, and effort in pursuing this initiative. All students and our entire community will benefit if our citizens will get behind this effort. Again, my name is Carol Blankenship, and I am in support of one new centrally-located school for all of Davie County.
Our next speaker is Ed Robertson, to be followed by Anna Wilson.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. My name's Ed Robertson. I live at 2006 US Highway 64 West in Moxville. I have a son who's a rising eighth grader at South Davie Middle School. I am a longtime resident of Moxville. I've watched over the years that we've had different debates about schools, and our communities have waged aggressive debates and went at it. And numerous times, it has failed. I am here tonight in support of one new high school. In my support, I'd like to offer up some data for my reasoning. I took a survey of five of our neighboring, or closely neighboring counties, and looked in depth at their situations in comparison to ours. I gained all the data from the North Carolina Census website. Out of the five counties, four others, including ours, were Yadkin, Davidson, Stokes, and Surrey. Davidson County, not counting the city schools, has a population of 117,056. The average house income is $44,000. They have eight high schools. Surrey has an average, has a population of 73,000, average income of $36,000 per household. They have three high schools. Stokes has a population of 47,000, average income $43,000. They have four high schools. We have a population of 41,000, average income of $50,000. We're one of the top counties in our state as far as that, and we should be proud of ourselves. We have one high school. Yadkin has 38,000 in population. They got $40,000 income. They support two high schools. I guess basically what I'm asking is, really, what are we arguing about? We're not asking for multiple schools, as our neighbors already have, and they're in far less financial shape than we are. We have the means to do it. The question is, what are we arguing about? At this time, I wish that we would put our kids first. I think the real reason that a lot of us are arguing about it, and maybe some in my thoughts, is people don't really want to see the change in it. You know, people want to keep things like they are. Well, a wise businessman told me one time, "There's no such thing as staying the same. You're either recession, or you're going forward." What we're doing right now is arguing at the cost of our youth, the future of our county. And I, for one, do not see why. After my child finishes up high school, maybe college, whatever he chooses to do, I hope one day he'll do as I did and move back here and live in the county that I love, that I call home. The only way we can do this is to build the foundation now for our future. We're at a crossroads. I'm not asking for anybody to make a decision tonight. What I'm asking for is, let's get this on the ballot, and let's let the voters decide, and let's do what's right. One school for all our children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anna Wilson, to be followed by Linda Mace.
Hello, my name is Anna Wall Wilson. I live at 116 Arnold Palmer Drive. I have lived in Davie County my entire life. I was even born in Davie County Hospital. My family has lived in Davie County for as long as my dad is from Kulumi, my mom is from Moxville. I don't know when we got here. It's been forever, I can promise you that. I am one of those people that truly believes that there is no place better to raise my family but here. I have three children, the oldest of which will be a freshman in the fall at Davie County High School. I work for our school system. I am a teacher assistant and a bus driver. I am here tonight to ask you guys to move forward with the proposal and to approve the plans for a new high school and the repurposing plans at the current high school. I know that there are still some people in our county who are afraid this may not be the right decision. For some, they are afraid of a tax increase. For others, they are afraid of bringing change to our county. I understand their fears. When I was a little girl, my family had a devastating house fire. We lost everything. I remember people coming from all over our county bringing things to us. People brought food, they brought clothes, they brought toys, furniture, money. They brought anything else we could possibly need. My family learned that when a community comes together, especially a community like this, anything is possible. I also understand the fear of changing our county. But you see, I know that it is not the old outdated buildings that we are sending our high school children to that make this county special. No, it is those children from every part of our county uniting together for their high school years. That's what makes this county unique. That's what makes this county unique. Now it is our turn and our duty to give them the tools that they need to succeed in the world today. They need to feel safe at school. They need to know that we will not allow them to fall behind others only because they don't have the room or the resources at their high school. We must show them that education is our biggest and smartest investment. We cannot continue to be frozen in fear with this issue. I am asking you tonight to put your trust in God and in each other and give our children what they deserve. The time is now. The only fear we should have is what will become of our children and our community and our county if we don't come together as one and move forward with these plans. Thank you for all of your time and your hard work.[640.02][640.02][applause]
Our next speaker is Linda Mace, followed by Tiffany Lakey.
My name is Linda Mace. I live at 426 Dedman Road in Moxville. Thank you, Madam Chairman, Board, and Dr. Hartness. And thank you for allowing us to speak before you take your vote tonight. As I stand here and I look at you, leaders in our community, I know you are also leaders in your churches. So when I ask you if we are our brothers' keepers, you understand what I'm referring to. I say we are by what I witness daily here in Davie County. We come together to help and comfort our friends and our neighbors when they have a need. We come together to volunteer at places like Storehouse for Jesus, Dragonfly House, and Big Brothers and Big Sisters, just to name a few. This shows that we are our brothers' keepers because we care enough to help the less fortunate among us. I found out yesterday that our number of foreclosure filings are up to 43, and that's just since the beginning of January, a little over two months. The architects who visited last month to present a new high school plan said we needed to spend $53,760,000. They also gave us a figure of $2,610,341 to renovate the K Building at our existing school for the administrative offices and demolition of the other buildings. Last week, we got a figure from the landscape architect for between $9 and $14 million to finish the sports complex at our existing high school. Using the lower figures, this is a total of $65,370,341. You, as a Board of Leaders in our community, are getting ready to ask for the largest tax increase in the history of Davie County. And I just heard our president say that we are living in the worst economy since the Great Depression. So I say to you tonight, if we truly are our brothers' keepers, then you have a moral obligation to everyone in Davie County to make the right decision. Thank you very much.[816.52][816.52][applause]
Our next speaker is Tiffany Lakey to be followed by Kristi Stroud.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Lakey. My address is 170 North Carolina Circle in Moxville. I am a lifelong resident of Davie County. I grew up in Moxville, attended Davie County Schools my entire life, and my husband and I are both graduates of Davie High School. And while we moved away for a couple of years because of our careers, we knew that when we had children, we were coming home. And we did. And we now have three children, the oldest of which is one of our Daisy Scouts this evening. And she is a student at Moxville Elementary School. Our middle daughter is in preschool in Davie County, and the youngest is just two months, but she'll be there one day. And I just want to say thank you for all you're doing, all your efforts to ensure that this county has the top-quality education that we knew that we needed to raise our children in. And I ask that you continue your efforts by approving the architect's plan for one new high school, as well as the repurposing of the existing facility. And again, I just want to say thank you for what you're doing for the children of this community and the county as a whole, for what this school will bring to us, our children's education, our county's growth and prosperity in the future. Thank you for all you're doing.[897.72][897.72][applause]
Our next speaker is Kristi Stroud to be followed by Jackson Wayne.
Good evening. My name is Kristi Stroud and I live at 4007 U.S. Highway 64 West here in Moxville. We have fought over this issue for a new high school for at least about 15 years. I was raised here and I went to school here. We still have some of the same issues today we had when I was at high school. We have overcrowded hallways, lunchtime issues, traffic situations, getting in and out of the parking lot. But now the added issue is we have more kids. Our main problem is we're running out of space. If there, and that's a safety issue for me. If you could add more floors to existing high school or add a parking deck to existing high school, it's still not going to help the overcrowding in the hallways, the traffic situation, or your lunchroom space. What is good about the new high school, it seems like it has more space. It seems to be laid out, I mean, what I've seen, it seems to be laid out pretty well. I know that with everything else with the new high school, you're going to have issues. You know, you're going to have some problems. But I think overall, maybe all of us as a group can come together and work it out peacefully. Like what they're going to do with the new current high school. I mean, I think, I mean, I think that's going to be a good thing for not just, I mean, I think it's going to be a good thing for everybody. But like I said, our main priority is having a healthy environment for our kids to learn and to make sure that we are keeping them safe. And that, I mean, that's the main issue for me. So I am hoping that we do get a new high school and that it will be something that everybody can get something out of, that they'll feel safe in, that they, that overall, that they'll be proud to live in a county that we are because it is a good county overall. I just hate that this issue has prolonged our success in striving to have a new high school. Or I just hate all the conflicts that we've had over the past several years because of it. Thank you.[1087.48][1087.48][applause]
Our next speaker is Jackson Wayne to be followed by Mark Deveraux.
My name is Jackson Wayne and I live at 547 Oak Valley Boulevard Advance. Hello, my name is Jackson Wayne. I go to Shady Grove, school at Shady Grove Elementary. I firmly believe that we should have a new high school. We need it because the old high school has way too many students into it. It should be centrally located for all of Davie County's students. I really hope everyone will vote yes and do the right thing for everybody in Davie County. Thank you for your time and listening.[1128.91][1128.91][applause]
Our next speaker is Mark Deveraux to be followed by Jamie Lohon.
Good evening. My name is Mark Deveraux, 178 Deacon Way, Moxville, North Carolina. The reason why I came to speak tonight is because I live with four women and they don't give me an opportunity to speak.[1153.33][1153.33][laughter] Actually, I've got, my daughter Claire is a freshman at Davie County High. My middle daughter Anna is at Ellis Middle. And my youngest daughter Rachel is at Cananser. I don't think I have a whole lot to add here tonight other than, like I mentioned in a previous meeting, is it is a very competitive world out there. And I work in business and big business in that. And you have to have the resources to compete. And we're talking about our kids and I get very passionate when we talk about our children. And I think this really comes down to doing the right thing. This is about doing the right thing for our kids and for the future. And I would ask all of you, even those who are opposed to it, to think about the young people around you, your family members, your friends, those people that are really our future, that we're investing in for our future. I've recently spoken with a few of my friends who have graduating seniors and it's difficult for their kids to get into universities and colleges today because they have to be prepared. They have to be taught in a system, in a school, that affords them the opportunities and the skills to be able to get into those schools, those colleges, and to go that extra mile. And that's what this is about. I recently went on a trip to the Caribbean and was able to talk to some of the folks there, some of the kids really, who don't have the opportunities that we have in this country. And we live in a great place where we can make decisions, where we do have resources that we can invest in our schools and invest in our kids. And it's just time for us to do that here. It's time for us to stop writing articles in the paper for and against. It's time for us to stop with the discussion and look at these plans. Look at our future. Look at the future of our kids. And we need to give them a place where they can learn those skills so they can be successful and take this county, and better yet, the state of North Carolina, and then go the next step, our country to a new place. I ask that you approve this one new high school, which I'm for, and this repurposing plan, and thank you for your time.[1322.72][1322.72][applause]
Our next speaker is Jamie Lohon to be followed by Dewey Hunt.
I'm impressed you said my last name right. Lohon, yes. My name is Jamie Coleman Lohon. I live at 2091 Junction Road, Moxville. My name is Jamie Coleman Lohon. I live in Culome currently. I've lived, I grew up in Culome. I'd like to say I'm a lifetime resident, but I did leave once I got married for about seven years. And when I was looking for a job, I knew I wanted to come back here. So the only place I knew I would live is Culome. So I'm proud to be a Culomite. There you go. And I also graduated from Davie. Our high school is overcrowded and it's time to do something about it. This issue is not about the haves and the have-nots because I have things and I don't have things. So there we go. This is about every child in our entire county having a safe place to learn and a school big enough for all of them. This is about having an exciting plan for the existing campus that could bring together all citizens of Davie. This decision, this is what I think about this decision, how I think about it. It's like having a baby. If you wait until you're financially ready, you may never start a family despite the amazing opportunity it brings. The time is now. This is our one chance to have one school that every student and every teacher in this county deserves. Please don't leave our children behind and please vote in favor of one new school.
Dewey Hunt will be followed by Lori Hampton.
I'm on.
It's you.
Protocol has been established, so I will go around. My last two minutes will be with Dr. Hartness. Most of you know how I feel about the high school situation. Also, you don't go bear hunting with a switch, okay? And the second thing is, you have to get your facts together. Now, I want you guys to look at these bricks and the cement as I speak. Most of you know I've been around the world, and even in Korea, that's the coldest place in the world. But I applaud, we are getting ready to come out of the box, okay? Whether we like it or not, Wendy, you'll be proud of me. I do my own research. I'm my own man. But without God, I can do nothing none of us can. That's who we're leaving out of the plan. If all of us to stop griping and start praying, things would change, okay? Now, there's one other thing. You've got to realize, if you're in the Word, how Solomon had all his problems. David, it started with David, right? Okay, now, what I'm trying to say is this. I've been in management for years. Well, of course, I'm retired now. I can just get up when I get ready and do things. But the thing about it is, you have a task list. Then you have an operational list. I'm speaking, and then after that, you put it all together. That's what all these pitches are about here. It's fixing, some fixing happened. Now, the only problem that I had with this is this. Now, I'm going to do some broken English. I can go up another octave, but that's not necessary because we have a different clientele of folks here. Now, the thing about it, what I mean, we have children here, we have workers here, we have that. So I won't sort of level it out. It's one thing that, my thing with stratification, was it not? The haves and missing the have-nots. Now, I sat down to high school on numerous days. We've got to pull our culture that way. We don't pull our culture that way, it's going to get us. How in the world can you stop pulling the culture that way? You spend $100 million and stop it. You start putting your folks up there and when the folks come across the river, that's a difference of stratification, correct? I'm a sociology major, so I know what I'm talking about, all right? And when they come across, they're going to come across the what? You already have the BMWs and all that sort of thing. But it's going to come across in, it's not about money, it's about power, folks. Now, Dr. Hartness, do this for me. I ask, I'm not from Davie County. I'm from Oklahoma, okay? My dad taught us everything. We just graduated, one of our nieces from Leanne's Renewal College in New York. Big degree. Cost their parents a lot of money, not me. But I applaud her on her master's degree and whatever she got, has to do with little things that's up here, bugs and stuff that go on the screen. I know what it is. But the thing about it, Dr. Hartness, listen to me. I asked years ago about the flagpole. There was a superintendent of schools put the flagpole up out there. We're going to have to deal with monuments here. And also, they were supposed to put some nice benches around the flagpole because that's where the African-American people met at the flagpole. That's where I used to get my girlfriend, that flagpole back in the day. But the thing about it is, I see all the beautiful graphics, but to hold this community and get support of your different strata levels of people, you're going to have to do something out here. At least make it look good. Think about that. I didn't say I was for it. I'm not saying I'm against it, but it's got to go. What does that mean? I'm not a politician, I'm a realist. And I'm going to get back in my lane, doing my labor work and pray for you guys. That'd happen. I already got a prayer partner. Everybody has said the same thing. I was over in Winston, then I'll stop. The best cleaning community of all these communities I've gone to is Davie County, okay? K Building, what happened to K Building? Ms. Suda knows, that's where you went with sports and that's, you know also, Ms. Bart. That's where it started, K Building, right? But you've got to do something here. If you don't, you're going to wake up a sleeping giant. I may be the right guide to it, I don't know, okay? You've got to do something here to hold this community together. Other than that, God bless you, may His eyes shine up on you and give you peace. Thank you.[1727.22][1727.22][applause]
Our next speaker is Lori Hampton to be followed by Aubrey Wayne.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I am Lori Hampton and I have four children. Ashlyn, who's 14, a North Davie student. Peyton, who's 12, who's at Ellis. We have a house divided even in middle school. And a 10-year-old and 6-year-old son and daughter that are students at Shady Grove. We moved to Davie County about two years ago. When we looked in the Piedmont area, the first thing I did was research the schools. As a mom and an educator, my children's education was my number-one priority. My second priority was finding a job in a school system that has a positive work environment, strong leadership, and is focused on student achievement and the well-being of every child. As I researched, the Davie County school system quickly made it to the top of my list. I was fortunate enough to find a job at North Davie Middle School. I am blessed to work with some of the best educators around and I wholeheartedly... I am blessed to work with some of the best educators around, and I wholeheartedly believe that the leadership and administration of my school and our district is as good as you can find. With that said, I ask, I ask you to support the building of one new high school for all students in Davie County. One thing I noticed about Davie County is a unique pride in being from Davie County. When I was in college, I was friends with some people from Davie County, and I distinctly remember these friends saying they're from Davie County. Not Moxville, not Advance, not Bermuda Run, not Cooleme, they were from Davie County. I think this comes from a deeply rooted pride in one school and one community. Davie High is something that unites, or should unite, all the people in Davie County. It is time. Now is the time. I haven't lived in Davie County long enough to have experienced the ugly history and the scars that other people have talked of. My only experiences are watching football games, basketball games, and touring Davie High. My first football game, I was forced to sit on the opponent's side. Not what I expected, but certainly not the end of the world. I wanted to sit on the Davie County side and cheer for my former students and our team. The last home basketball game I attended, I was forced to sit in the auxiliary gym and hope and wait for someone to leave so I could have their seat. I wanted to watch the Davie High boys play. Another experience was at open house for rising freshmen. My daughter has applied to the STEM program, which focuses on science. However, I understand that the science labs are antiquated and inoperable. This is unacceptable. Finally, just in the last couple of weeks in one of my classes, we were discussing how North Carolina has been called the Rip Van Winkle State. I had one of my students comment, just like Davie County and Davie High School. Folks, it's sad that a 14-year-old makes this profound statement. It is time. Now is the time for one new Davie High School, and I'm asking all of you to support that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Aubrey Wayne to be followed by Julia Suter, whose name I could only read because the superintendent already knew what it said.
Okay.
Oh, she's back there.
Good even, evening, members of the school board. Good evening, members of the school board. I am Aubrey Wayne. I live at Oak Valley Boulevard Advance, and I am a first grader in Davie County. I love my teachers at my school, and I always want to go to school in Davie County, but our high school is too small to fit us all. We need to build, build a new high school so our friends and I can go to school together. We all, I, we all are going to do great things, and we need your support. Thank you.
I wouldn't want to follow anybody else. That young lady was outstanding, simply because she is what we are here and about, those young folk. My name is Julia Suter, and I live at 115 Meadowview Road, Moxville. To the board, let me say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I came to this county in 1964, right out of college, and I came to teach and coach, and by crack, we had a great time. In 19, and schools were segregated at that time. Davie County schools were segregated at that time, and I want you to know that in 1967, '68, all students in Davie County went to Davie High School. And I'll tell you, and I think it was one of the most successful transitions we had ever seen, and I attribute that to the people of this county, the people who support these children and this school. For 12 years, I worked at Davie High School as a teacher and a coach and administrator, and I sit here now, or stand here, and I look at young folk, you're riding ours, and, and those folk who came through when I was there. But above all else, I look out here now and I see young people who have children in school, and they were there as students. I spent 12 years at Davie High School, and I can tell you now that they were some good days. We had some great times and some outstanding students and exceptional teachers. And I had questions for the commissioners at that time because our teachers were doing too good a job for the resources that they were given. Thank you. And I often said to the teachers that we cannot back up, but at the same time, quit shooting yourself in the foot. But they continued to do it, and that was many years ago. And after having spent 36 years in Davie County working with our students, I retired, couldn't do it long, and I went to Roy Endy for more years. I have done 40 years now educating or working with children, and I don't even want a school bus to come by my house. But the point is that we have young folk who deserve more than they are getting. You heard these young people who were up here today and their wars that they have earned, and not only for themselves, but for Davie County and Davie County schools. You heard the young person who said they wanted a better school. I look at these folk who are sitting on this board, and I look and listen to the architects who drew up a plan for the future of Davie County. And when they drew that plan, they included everybody in this county. And they drew a plan that would include every facet of today's education, but had enough foresight to make preparations for our schools of the future. And if we don't plan for that now, then we are doing our students a disservice. We are telling them that they don't count, and they are still doing the best that they can do in spite of us. So what we need to do at this point, I don't know what that clock is saying, I don't know what, how much time I have. I have 1 minute 32 seconds. So when I say to all of you that we support this idea, this is not the first plan that we've had. You've had several of them, and you've had referendums, and they were voted down. But this is the first time that I have seen a plan that meets the needs of all of our kids in this county. And I say to you, the Board of Education, I lend you my support right now. And as far as anything that I may be able to do in the future, let me know, because I think that we have a great job ahead of us. I think our job, first of all, is convincing our commissioners that this must be done, and then convincing the commissioners that it must be done in the next election in November, and then give our people in this county the opportunity to say yes or no. And when I listen and talk to folk today, I think I'm hearing them say that we have waited long enough, that now is the time for us to do the right thing. Thank you so very much.
I'm Elizabeth Rosenbaum. I live at 135 Canyon Road, Moxville, and I don't have a whole lot to say. I want to keep it short and sweet, uncharacteristically, but a new Davie High School is a need, not a want, not a luxury. It is a need for students to safely thrive academically, athletically, and socially. It is a need for faculty to be able to focus on kids and not facilities. It is a need for this community to attract business and to grow economically. It is a need, I hope, that you will vote yes for tonight. Thank you.
My name's Randy McDaniel Senior. I'm a 57-year-old resident of Davie County called Moxville, but I've never lived in the city limits. I come tonight to voice opposition to this plan, and my opposition is far greater tonight than it was in 2003, 2007, and the 2010 COP's funding request. The current economic climate alone is enough for a reason to reject this plan, but I want to talk about a couple of other areas. The first is on technology integration. Most likely, there's not a single person in this room that does not know, understand, or agree that, that technology integration is the future of academic achievement. The story of academic, uh, uh, technology integration is best explained by our neighbor in, in the Mooresville Grade 8 School District. The Mooresville Grade 8 School District Superintendent was recently named the 2013 National Superintendent of the Year. He came in 2007, Dr. Edwards, and he gave, and his goal, his futuristic ideas was to deliver a computer to every kid from the 4th through the 12th grade. And he did so, and the results are, are just amazing, speaking from the high school level and above. At the end of the grade test in high school, have increased from 73 to 89 percent. Their four-year cohort graduation rate has increased from 77 percent to 90 percent. And their college-going rate has 74, has increased from 74 to 88 percent. Now, they, uh, the Mooresville Grade 8 School District put a plan together. It was a, uh, something that they chose to increase the investment into technology, professional training, and community involvement. Therefore, all the possibilities of socio-economic segregation was removed. And for your information, everybody, tonight, Mooresville High School still currently operates in a high school that is older than Davie County High School. My second area I want to touch on is about our county taxes. Without doubt, that's a part of everyone's life if you own a piece of property. However, an excessive property tax rate can be economic suicide to a county. With 2013 being a revalve year, and, and will come with a known increase of somewhere between four and six cent, hopefully not any more, but not any less than four cent. So we need to look at this big elephant in the room. As I witnessed at the senior center, it was told that we're going to have an approximately, a plan for approximately $56 million high school. Everything, just because it's new, don't mean it's always the best. You should not, as a board, not include the $5 million of, to try and reduce it down to $49 million. That's borrowing money from the county as well. You shouldn't include the $2 million of lottery funding because that is so crucial, it's so limited, and the, the long-range plan told all of you that we have got $44 million in other schools that we've got to take care of, and we need to address them as well. So we're looking at $56 million dollars' worth, and we're looking at a, our one cent of our property tax is equal to around $400,000. That gives us a borrowing power to service debt of one cent for $5 million. So if we've got $56 million, that's 11 cents. Two, uh, for the 11 to $14 million repurposes in a high school of two cents, and the loss of revalve, I'm saying five cents, that's 18 cents on 100, going from 62 to 80. Folks, that's a 29 percent increase in a one-year time. I want to close by saying that how can this board ever expect, in February of 2010, a quarter-cent sales tax was rejected by this county? Quarter cents? How can we expect our voters and our people to absorb this detrimental economic, economic impact cost? I suggest that we, we do a code RED. RED acronym for renovate and educate Davie. And I thank you for your time.
On behalf of the board, we want to say thank you to each of you who came to the podium to speak to us, and we do appreciate your comments and your views. At this time, we are going to begin on other business items. The first thing on the agenda is the graduation date for Davie County High School and Davie County Early College High School.
Madam Chair, you see this agenda item, there's a recommendation for the board to accept Saturday, June the 8th at 8:30 a.m. for graduation for Davie County High School at War Eagle Stadium, and May 25th at 11 a.m. at the Brock Center for the Early College High School.
You've heard from the superintendent the two dates, so to propose for the motion, is there a motion to approve those dates for the high school graduation and Davie Early College graduation? Paul makes the motion, is there a second? Carol seconds, is there any discussion or any questions you have of the staff? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the graduation date of Saturday, June the 8th at 8:30, rain dates, June the 9th, for the Davie High School, as well as May 25th at 11 at the Brock for the Davie Early College, all in favor? Seven zero. I've got some people writing, all right? Thank you. Next on the agenda is, hang on, I've got to make it smaller. The security system funding requests, Dr. Hartness and Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On your board agenda, you have a recommendation that you approve the purchase of software and equipment to enhance our school's security systems, and there's an accompanying budget amendment that's been presented. This would be funds used for security doors with proximity cards at a couple of our schools, and consolidation of some of our burglar fire and silent alarm systems and intercom system here at this campus.
Thank you. There's a recommended action by the staff is to approve the purchase of software and equipment to enhance our school's security systems, and the accompanying budget is also amended. Do I have a motion to accept this item? Steve makes the motion. Chad seconds, is there any discussion or any questions you have of Dr. Hartness or Mr. Wallace?
I want to say, I want to say again, I appreciate the work you've done on this. We were touring Walker Town High School on Friday. We found out about the shooting at Newtown, I believe, and, and that weekend, Dr. Hartness went to work on putting together, you know, things to calm the community and, and started on different things that we could improve security, and I appreciate that, and it's, I hope it's reassuring to the, to the parents and to the, to the community.
Any other statements or comments? I will call for the vote to approve the purchase of software and equipment to enhance our school's security system, and, and also the budget that accompanies this. All in favor? Next on the agenda is to, um, this, to the schematic design for the new high school, and before I call for a motion, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Hartness for a few comments.
Madam Chair, you heard from the public tonight. We've heard from our students, our staff, our parents, and different people in the community through our facility assessment process that we did last year, through our strategic planning process, and through all the meetings that our architects have conducted to gather feedback as they develop the schematic design. And tonight, we're at the point where we have Wesley Curtis and Clark Pierce from Walter Robbs Callahan Pierce with us that are available to answer any questions the board has about this schematic design phase. I would remind the board that this is just the initial phase in the school design. When funding becomes available, there's another five to six month worth of work to work out all the details. They would work with our staff. They would work with our staff to tweak the plans and make it exactly what Davie County needs for a new high school. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over back to you, Madam Chair, and the board can ask our architects any questions that they might have about the schematic design.
Clark and Wesley, you're going to come up to the podium. Do any of our board members have any more questions of our architects?
I'm scared to start this, but I will. I was just interested, I started to ask the, the other night, whenever you, we did the presentation, and again, it was phenomenal, but were you given a, a dollar amount, a budget, or anything to stay under, whenever you start this proposal, or anything like that?
No.
So you just, you took the needs of what you heard, and, and it, that's what it ended up being?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can you, can you, hello, is it on? Can you speak to components of the new design that would include any green design or qualities? I don't even know how to ask, but I think you're nodding, you understand where I'm going.
Yes, sure. Basically, what we try to do is features alike orientating the building in the correct manner, so that we take advantage of, of solar angles, so reducing heat into the building. We've got a green roof on the media center that, that shows, you know, what you can do to try to alleviate the, the heat outing effect. We try to use materials that are VOC, low in VOC for indoor air quality. We try to provide windows and light into the building to also enhance indoor quality. Another thing we try to do too is use materials that are, have a high recycle content, and to try to eliminate materials where we don't need them, so we're not taking materials from the environment that, a lot of times, you'll put, just put in the building because it looks nice. So we try to use materials, number one, that have recycle content, and we try to reduce the materials if we don't need them specifically to save from taking from our environment. Those are some of the general.
I was asked by an architect, friend of mine, and my son, who's in school now for that, can, not asking for the numbers right now, but can you get us some information about what extra dollars it would take to do some solar panels for electrical generation and/or hot water?
We'd be glad to.
Can, can we find out if that can be incorporated into it? I'm sure it's going to raise the numbers, the, the total cost, but in the long run, that seems to be a technology that has grown to the point where it may be conceivable to use that now.
We just recently finished a new middle school down in Davison County that used both the solar water heating panels for the classroom wings, as well as some photovoltaic panels, just to help supplement the electricity that the school would use. That is metered separately, so they know how much power that they're not, that they're not paying the utility company for. Was not a particularly large expense, I don't know right offhand what it was. The photovoltaic panel array was a ten KW panel system, so that's what it would provide in, you know, basically a cloudless day. Even in the cloudy day, the last I saw, it pulled in about a, you know, one and a half to two KWs. So it, you can, if you put in a big enough array, sell some of that back to the power grid, you can purchase certificates for green energy, there's a number of things that you can do that you may or may not want to consider.
I mean, and, and we certainly, we certainly would, would welcome the opportunity to integrate more sustainable features, and I say the sustainable, not just in how we orient, but actually use some hard, as Clark was saying, some photo, photal, photal units, so that we can really take advantage of the sun, and, and not only just, just, I mean, it's really a great teaching tool. So you also take advantage of the energy, but it's a great teaching tool as well for the students.
I would like to see that. I assume it would be reported as a separate item with a price tag on it that we could possibly add to it. If, if we're, if we're talking about this big amount of money to build a whole new school, and it's going to take a referendum or a financial source to do that big of a number, then the add-on of the power grid and water heating would be minor compared to what we're already doing. So I would love to see that on paper.
Madam Chair, I'll just make a motion. First off, I, again, thank you for the tremendous plans that you put forth. I think they just, I don't know, they just said Davie County, and that, the wall, and was on the front page of the paper and the journal, it just, it was just beautiful, and thank you for taking all of the, I think you can see the passion and the love the people have for this county in this room here tonight, and to see it right there, you really did a great job of representing that. So, I thank you for that, and I would like to make a motion that we adopt the schematic design.
The motion to adopt the schematic design for the new high school as presented by architects, and the project estimate of fifty-three million, seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand, is that your motion, Carol?
Yes.
Okay, that Carol made the motion, do I have a second? Clint has second. Is there any more discussion?
I'd like to say something, Madam Chairman. I feel like most of you know me, and you probably know where I stand on this situation, and I want to just tell you a little bit, first of all, tell you a little bit about me, I do have four grandchildren that, that, two of them are in Davie County schools at this time, that, they go to Shady Grove, they'll go to Ellis and Davie High School. My two younger grandsons will go to Moxville Elementary School, and at, at this point, and then they'll go to South Davie on the Davie High School. But I oppose this plan tonight for several different reasons. Number one is the economic impact it'll have on this county, and the economic impact it'll have on this school system. We know, I know, for the last two years, we've operated this system on, with a million-dollar deficit. We've had to, we've had to draw down on our savings, basically, just to operate. We, at this point in time, I've heard no plan to, to make up for that money. You know, I've heard a lot of stuff about having a new school, it'll be beautiful, and I'd love to have a new school, and, but I, I see no plan put forward how we'll be able to continue to operate this system and offer the services that we presently offer. Also, we've, we were told in our facility assessment that we had forty-four million dollars' worth of needs at our other schools, six elementary schools and our two, two older middle schools. We, we have no, I see, see no plan on how we're going to be able to take care of that. You know, I got, I made a statement last week, Ms. O'Donnell called me from the journal and asked me, and I told them, I said then, that, you know, we've got parents throughout this county that, that are sitting home tonight, wondering how they're going to make it from one week to the next. And, you know, I came under quite a bit of criticism for that, but let me say this now, I stand by that statement. And this person sent me also in that, when they criticized me for that, they sent me the mission of the Davie County school system. First thing it says is create and communicate a comprehensive plan for programs and facilities. We've got to have the money, the money's got to come from somewhere to be able to do this, to enhance learning experience through the use of technology. We probably have the most technology in this school system of any system in the state of North Carolina. It's got to be maintained, and it's got to be improved, and we have no plan to do that. Enhance learning experiences through the use of this technology, attract strong administrative teaching and support staff. I don't know the last time we raised supplements in this county for our teachers that work hard every day. You know, I'd like to see a nurse in every school. You know, speaking of, speaking of the nurse, it's very important to me, I've got a grandson that'll be at Moxville Elementary School that has severe food allergies, and if he don't get the attention that he needs, if something happens, he could suffocate. You know, that's not up to our principals and our teachers to have to be responsible for that. We need to have trained personnel in our school system to take care of this. You know, we want to have ninety-five percent of our third graders reading at grade level, we're right at seventy-five percent. How do we hire the extra staff? How do we put the programs in place to do this? It's going to take money. We won't increase our graduation rate. Not, a brand-new high school would be great, but it's not going to do anything to increase the graduation rate at Davie High School. If we close down Davie High School on May thirty-first, and open up on September the first with a fifty-seven million-dollar building, and nothing else changes, we've done nothing to improve education. And...
Ladies and gentlemen, let's be respectful, this is the meeting of the Board of Education.
I will say this in closing, I respect your opinions of what you want, and I admire you for what you've done, but I also ask that you respect my opinion, and that's, I just wanted to let you know, I feel like I owe you that, because I will be voting no. And as, as taxpayers and families in this county, you deserve to be, you deserve to know why.
Thank, thank you. Is there any other comments?
There has been a number that has been given out to what the cost of the new high school would be. There has been incorrect information that has passed through the community and promoted from the birth of this, when, project, when it was called a concept. That incorrect information was never corrected and given back to me. Let me back up. I am all for a new high school, I'd love to see it. I'd also love to see several new elementary schools and/or renovations to those properties. I don't think now is the right time to do this. When I said that before, and, and I see people shaking their head, and you can disagree with me, that's fine. When I made that statement, and direct question back to me, well, Paul, when is the right time? And I don't know the answer to that, but what I do know is, in my opinion, this is not the right time. You can take the information and twist it to your advantage to support your take or your tact. You can market and/or promote one view or another, and find the documentation and/or statistics to be to your advantage. I did some research, back in the October meeting of this board, tried to explain some of those points and some of the research that I had come up with. To this date, none of that information has been talked about, discussed, reasoned, et cetera. Much of it has not even been listened to. I am very, very disappointed that incorrect information has been floated all over this county. I'll say it again, I would love to see a new high school, and new elementary schools, and updates to all of the school facilities. October board meeting, it was voted five to two to stop a project that was voted six-zero before I came on the board at the current high school. I didn't have any say-so, I didn't have any, say-so that counted. I was outvoted, I was, I was one of the two people that voted against the stopping of the remodeling and reconstruction work at the current high school. Prior to me coming on the board, I heard this battle of things that had been going on in this county over the education system for a long, long time. I came to school and was a teacher here, and a coach here in nineteen, when did I come here? Seventy-eight. I was here for sixteen years, in that building that y'all are saying is about to fall apart. I taught and coached there, some of the students that I caught, taught and coached are in this room tonight. I left the school system because I was offered a job to go do something that I was, felt like I was called to go do, just the same calling that I had to get into coaching and teaching when I took that job to start with. Some of the comments that I hear, the, the mumbling and muffling of people that are on one side of this fence, as soon as someone starts talking about the other side of the fence, it's vicious. It's not realistic. You're so bent and so determined to have something one way or no way, and you're not willing to listen to the documents and the information and the statistics of, of any other side. And I'm, that goes both ways, I'm not picking on one side or the other. After that five-to-two vote in October, I agreed to support the planning and the development of this one high school project, because I wanted to make sure that if it proceeded to the point where it is right now tonight, that the new high school plan, and thank you very much, guys, I asked questions, I saw you in action down there in the room at the current Davie High School, where you had different people come through, and you put all these ideas and things on the wall and on the boards, and you incorporated the ideas and the wishes and the wants and the needs, and all of those words that have been thrown around viciously and, and in an attacking fashion. You took all that information, and you melded it into a project that was displayed formally on, what was the date, Dr. Hartness? February nineteenth. A fabulous presentation. It's been in the Winston-Salem paper, it was in the Salisbury paper, it's been in the Davie paper, it's been in the, Clint, what's the special little paper for Clemmons Journal? Journal West, excuse, thank you. I believe, Carol, you've already made the motion that we should move this, and then we're into a discussion section on this. I do not think, one of the things that I was going to do prior to this meeting tonight, I studied the idea, and I thought about asking for a motion to proceed, to, to put a stop on the vote tonight, and ask for a, I can't think of my word, Jill, help me, what is it?
A public hearing.
A public hearing, where we could hear more discussion, et cetera, et cetera, about any issues that the public, the voting public, the people that are going to be paying for this thing, that all of you are talking about, that's going to one-hundred percent impact the children that you're talking about. Prior to a vote countywide for a referendum that would generate the income to pay for the, income, pay for the revenue to pay for a new high school, and renovate the property that would, would be vacated, prior to having that vote, the vote that, that's on the table now, I thought about, before this meeting started, and I thought about taking or making a motion to suspend this, and, and have another meeting, where people could voice their opinions and listen to each other, and try to figure out, Steve said, that he appreciated your opinion, and he hoped that you would try to appreciate and understand where he is, where he's coming from with his thoughts. On October, the board meeting in October, I had a list of things that I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask so that you could hear me ask them, and so that you could hear me ask them, so that we could debate those points and find out if they were valid and reasonable documentation to help sway the vote of this board, and/or maybe tamper, temper, temper some of the malicious and vicious comments that were being run and spread in this county. One of my comments, one of my things, one of my points back then is, several people tonight have said things that you're disappointed in the division in this county, and how it's been divided and split apart and torn apart by this issue of this new high school for all these years. How about a coming together? How about a pep rally that brings people together? How about the football game where the Davie football team played over in Winston-Salem? All the people that came to that cheering for a football team. All the people that came to that cheering for a football team? That wasn't, I don't even know who said it, but that wasn't intended to be a malicious comment, was it? That wasn't an open-minded comment, was it?
Audience, if you'd please allow the board, this is not an open dialogue, this is comments from the board, and if we could...
I'm asking the board to consider all, I think all of us around the board, if we had to vote right now, if nothing was an issue, we'd vote to have a new high school just like that. But there are other issues. There are other things that are gonna seriously impact this county if we do this. At one time, prior to me even being on the board, Barbara, you and Chad and Carol and Steve were on that board at that time, plus other ones that have rotated off, you had a plan to address the needs that were specifically identified at Davie High School by the staff that works there, the people that are in the building day-to-day. They came up with a list of issues that they felt like had been carried on forever and ever and ever, and there was a plan to resolve that. And that plan was way less expensive than this, and, and I feel like that would be a better way to go. But I was voted out, five to two, on that idea. That's, that was stopped. I am, I'm saying to everyone here and to the board members tonight, folks, I'm, I'm scared of what this kind of financial problem would cause the county. I have looked for answers, I've looked for ways to try to justify in my mind how a grand and glorious thing that a new high school would be and how we can pay for it without causing such a financial problem to the county. I, I haven't found an answer to that. Steve said a while ago that he was not going to support the vote tonight, and, and I'm not going to either. I would love to see a new school. Dr. Harnes, you have worked long and hard, lots of time and effort, you've coordinated time with the architects on the schematic design, and you've talked to your different departments and different staff. And, and what we all would like to happen, to have happen, I think would be grand and glorious, but I cannot support it for all the reasons that were on that list at that time and the ones that I've added since then. One of the speakers tonight talked about foreclosures. Ellen, my wife, is the clerk of court. She has no records that she can get her hands on to tell me how many foreclosures had happened in, in that eighteen-month window prior to October. That was on my list back then. And one of the speakers tonight learned what that number was for just January and February this year so far. I, I'm asking you to seriously consider the ramifications of what you're about to do. And, and I know you have, I know you've spent time, um, and I very much appreciate it. I, I really do. Wendy, you, you, you and I had a scuffle, and it was over your heartfelt opinion about what you wanted to happen and, and et cetera, et cetera. And please don't interrupt. I'm doing what I'm called to do. I, I am, I am very much interested in advancing the possibilities and the, and the things that are available through a school system that this school system can offer to kids. I, I'm all over that. I'm okay with that. I just think now is a horrible time to do it. So, when, when everyone is finished making their comments and discussion and it's ready to vote, I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Any more comments?
I, I'm not gonna give a big speech. All I'd like to say is, is that, you know, at the end of the day, I certainly share concern with, with people hurting. There are people in our community that are always hurting, and, and we have a responsibility as a community to help those folks. And I feel I have a responsibility as a Christian to help those folks. This is certainly something that we need to do. We've needed to do it for a long time, and I can't think of a better forum for people to voice their opinion than voting on this at the poll in November.
This is a very emotional and passionate issue, and I totally respect Steve. I really appreciate him coming before you all, knowing what he has just heard, and Paul, and speaking from their heart. I think all of us have spoken from our hearts, and all of you all have as well. It is of my opinion, and we have been ten to twelve years discussing this issue, that it is time to move forward. I don't think we need to go backward. A public hearing, we've had many, many public hearings. I think we are at a point where it is, we, we've heard from the people. I, I would still like to continue with my motion to go forward. I, I agree with Chad. As Christians in this community, and I think this, this community is known for taking care of one another, many people tonight have spoken to that. We will continue to do that. We set a fine example for that, but this is about the education of our children and the future of our county, and I think it's time to go forward. So, I will stand by my motion with all respect to Paul and all respect to Steve and my fellow board members, and make the motion that we approve this schematic design at the cost of fifty-three million.
I will repeat the motion, and I do thank each of you for your comments. That's what the Board of Education is about, is to share and to talk and to listen and to, and to move forward. The motion on the floor is the board accepts the schematic design for the new high school as presented by our architects and the project estimate of fifty-three million, seven hundred and sixty thousand. Carol made the motion, Clint seconded. We've had discussion. It is time to vote. All in favor of this motion, please show a raise of hand. It shows five. Those opposed? Two. Five to two. The motion passes five to two. Next on our agenda, we do need a motion. The staff has recommended that we make a motion to request a meeting with the Davie County Board of Commissioners during the month of March two thousand thirteen for the purpose of discussing the new plans for construction of a high school and the potential methods of financing it, including specifically a request to place before the voters of Davie County a bond referendum to fund the, a portion of this construction. Wendy has made that motion. Is there a second? Chad has seconded. Is there any discussion?
Is this a meeting that this board faces the other board and has discussion? What, what does, describe this meeting what you would potentially see it to be?
The meeting would be with Dr. Harnes and our staff and the architects, and they would go to the commissioners and present what we saw in February.
Does the board go, does this board go?
Not usually, not usually.
If it's a joint meeting, it would be the full boards, both full boards.
I'm not calling for a joint meeting. It's just a meeting.
I mean, from, from my perspective, this board would be there in support of the superintendent's staff, but we're not talking about having a joint meeting.
Dr. Harnes, would you like to share what, what you could, what you envisioned this to be?
At least in my experience, it has been when the Board of Education takes action and then they would request the superintendent and staff to develop a presentation and request for the Board of Commissioners to fund what the board has now voted upon. So, typically, that presentation would be the superintendent and the architects presenting before the Board of Commissioners and requesting a bond referendum or funding for a project. We did not propose that we have the two boards facing each other in a joint meeting. Of course, the board could call for that. It's your pleasure, and I would hope that the board would definitely be present at that meeting, but that was the format that we recommended from staff.
My question, Barbara, is I thought I read somewhere that, that the next step after the vote that was just done, the next step is a joint, where did I read that? A joint meeting?
It just says request a meeting.
On the, in your board packet, it says to request a meeting so that we can share the new plans of the construction of the high school and the potential methods of financing.
Okay.
That's the way the motion reads. Is there any more questions or discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote, and we are voting for us as a board to request a meeting with the Davie County Board of Commissioners during the March two thousand thirteen for a purpose of discussing the new plans for construction of a high school and the potential methods of financing it, including specifically a request to place before the voters of Davie County a bond referendum to fund a portion of this construction. The motion, the motion was made by Wendy, seconded by Chad. All in favor, please show your hands. Five. All opposed. Two. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the financial commitment to address a new Davie County high school. The staff has recommended that the board affirm the commitment to contribute sources of funds to the construction of a new high school by transferring two million dollars in existing and projected available sources of revenue, including lottery monies and reserve capital outlay funds to the project ordinance for the new high school when appropriate. The staff also recommends that the board commit two hundred thousand dollars annually from the North Carolina Lottery Funds toward the debt service for school construction starting in twenty sixteen. Do I have a motion to that effect? Chad makes the motion. Do I have a second? Clint seconds. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a few things I need to say on that. As I mentioned earlier, we have forty-four million dollars worth of work that have been identified at our other schools, and I'm concerned about the use of lottery money for, for debt service. I know we're only talking about two hundred thousand dollars, but we only got four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, and we, at, at our peak, we got eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. So, at this point in time, our lottery money is, proceeds are going down, and I'm concerned as, concerned that we'll not have the available funds to, to maintain our existing facilities. We're also losing money on our sales tax, capital outlay, sales tax money. We're down to, uh, we had about one-point-three million this past year. We've already committed three hundred thousand dollars for debt service at Ellis out of that, and I just think it's, uh, you know, and let's be honest with you, if, if somebody will vote for a ten-cent tax increase, they'll vote for an eleven-cent tax increase. So, you know, it's, uh, I don't, I don't see the wisdom in using our lottery money for debt service and jeopardize the maintenance and the needs of our existing facilities.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Chad made the motion, Clint seconded. And this is to the board to affirm the commitment to contribute sources of funds to the construction of a new high school by transferring two million dollars in existing and projected available sources of revenue, including lottery fund monies, reserve capital outlay funds to the project, uh, project ordinance for the new high school when appropriate, and also recommended that we commit two hundred thousand dollars annually from the North Carolina Lottery Funds toward debt service for the school construction starting in twenty sixteen. I will call for the vote. All in favor? Five. All opposed. Two. Last on our business item is the repurposing of the current high school campus. The staff has recommended that the board accept the repurposing plan and cost estimate, which is two-point-six million, proposed by our architects for the use of the current cap, campus at Davie County High School. Upon completion of the new Davie County High School, including the use of the K Building for the administrative purposes, and tender the remaining campus to the commissioners for the provision of recreation and/or any other community uses for the citizens of Davie County. Do I have a motion for that? Clint makes the motion. Carol seconds. Do I have any discussion?
Can you, at this point, can anybody around the table offer me, maybe Dr. Harnes, and you may not be able to now, what is the avenue that, um, how, how would this show up on a vote for people to vote?
Mr. Drexler, again, that would be up to the county commissioners as how they would present this to the public on a vote. There are some rules established by the State Board of Elections on how bond referendums could be posed on a ballot. I will tell you that the repurposing for our use of the K Building and the grading and demo of the old buildings, as well as the construction of the new high school, could be one question on a ballot for a school bond referendum, and we know that that total is around fifty-six million dollars. Depending on the level of commitment by the commissioners, this board has now committed two million toward the construction of a new school and repurposing. If the commissioners chose to stand by their previous commitment of five million, then we're somewhere around the forty-nine million dollar range. But again, the commissioners make that decision as to what their level of existing commitment is that will not affect the tax rate and what the total bond would be for school construction. On the same ballot, there could be a separate question of yes, no, for a recreation bond. And again, our architects presented several different options. Mr. Miller came and presented options, but it's not the board's responsibility to determine which parts and pieces of those options are best for Davie County. That would fall back into the responsibility and realm of the Board of County Commissioners, and they have an athletic or a recreation master planning committee that will be working. So, they would need to determine what parts of that plan that, that would be best for Davie County. And if that is then determined, there could be a separate recreation bond on the ballot, on the same ballot, but those two could not be combined. Did that help answer your question?
And suffice it to say that there's nothing about whatever you do that dictates what the county does with that property once you tender it, it's surplus. That's up to the county. So, if they decide to put in a pool tomorrow or decide to wait ten years to put in a pool, that's up to the county. You don't have any say or jurisdiction over recreational activities or even over use of property, it's surplus to them.
But I'm sure that the county, before they put something on the ballot for recreation, would make it very clear as to what that is for, just as we've made it clear what the school bond would be for, as you can see through these drawings and the presentations that we've made public. Hope that answers your question, Mr. Drexler.
Let me, let me say one other thing. The five million commitment from the county commissioners is borrowed money. Three-point-one million dollars was zero-interest bonds, which will have debt service. It's just like buying a car, zero interest. You do have a car payment. And the one-point-nine million would be borrowed basically at the same rate. I guess the, the rest of the bonds would be sold for, and I think at this point in time, that's probably around three-point-two-five percent today. It could be up, it could be down by the time we do it, but, but I just wanted to make it clear that that five million was at, when they committed it to the renovations at the high school, it was borrowed, so I would assume that they're gonna still, still borrow it.
That's absolutely true, Mr. Ridenhour, and I, I hope that I made that clear when I presented on February the nineteenth, that that five million is borrowed. We do have a commitment of three-point-one million in qualified school construction bonds at zero percent interest, but our commissioners, when they committed that five million, made it clear to us that that five million borrowed would not affect the current tax rate in Davie County.
Yeah, that's the point I was gonna make. I think that's the most important part of that, that it wouldn't, wouldn't impact the, the current tax rate.
I would say this, that was twenty months ago before we lost about three hundred million dollars of our tax base, so who knows what we got now?
Yeah. Well, we're hopefully growing that with some new business coming in too, so...
Okay, we have a motion on the floor made by Clint.
Further discussion?
Oh, are you?
The, the issue that I was getting at, and you got real close to it, but I want to make sure I'm right. sure I'm right. Is there a possibility that the yes/no vote on two separate issues would be on the same ballot? Is there a potential result that it could be that the new high school gets enough votes that it passes in the community, and then the renovation of the, what would be abandoned property would not get voted for? So therefore, you would wind up with a new high school being built over here, and where this, where the high school is now, the parts on the front that the school board is going to continue to keep and maintain and own, but the rest of it is included in this bond.
I'm going to yield your question to your legal counsel.
Yeah, let me explain how this works. School boards have, have one responsibility when it comes to facilities, which is to spell out the needs of the school system. That's your responsibility. So your responsibility is to say, here's what we have just voted five to two are the needs of the school system, which is for this new high school, at what we estimate is this amount. County commissioners have the responsibility of financing however they choose to finance. So whether or not, for example, the park recreation bond passed, the county can do whatever they want with the property. They can fund it with other funds than bond funds. They can choose to use bond funds. They can pay as you go. They can sell the property. They can do whatever they choose to do, and there is not a thing on this earth that if you gave the property to the county commissioners, any of you could knew about it. It's totally up to them. So the purpose of this vote is not to direct what happens to that property, because you don't have that authority. What you're saying in this motion is, we would like to maintain the K Building for the purposes we've talked about. We would like to offer proposed ideas, and we would tender what we don't need as surplus to the county commissioners for them to do with whatever they choose, to finance however they choose, and none of that, you're not binding the commissioners to anything by any of this.
But I would make the comment to that certainly right, but here are three ideas that, that a committee that Dr. Harkness put together came up with, and you may do one of them, you may do a variation of one, you may do whatever, but I think at the, at this particular point, I think it's, you know, we have, as a school board, shown our willingness to, to use that property for, for the good of the people of the community in, by way of a recreation plan.
That answered your question? Okay. Is there any more comments? Okay. I will call for the vote to accept the repurposing plan with the cost estimate of 2.6 million. This estimate proposed by our architects for the use of the current campus of Davie County High School upon completion of the new Davie County High School, and that we would use the K Building for administrative purposes and tender the remaining campus to the commissioners for the provision of recreation and/or other community uses for the citizens of Davie County. All in favor of this motion? Show of hands. Five. All opposed? Two. Five, two. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our business section. We now have a committee and staff report. Deborah?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Harkness. I have one item this evening. It is the March donations report. What I've done is, you can see, I've just, you have the complete donation report for the year, and I've highlighted in yellow the donations that have been received since our last board meeting. I would like to call attention to the donations at Coolamie Elementary School. You'll see there that we've received almost $2,000 for Coolamie Elementary in memory of Mary Hendricks, one of our former educators who passed away recently, and I understand you'll see more donations coming in to Coolamie Elementary School in your next report as well. And again, I would like to thank our members of the community for their generosity and their support of our school system.
Ladies and gentlemen, now is the time for the comments from the board. I'm going to take this privilege to say thank you again to each of you who came this evening, each of you who spoke. I also want to thank our board members for their passion and compassion for each other and their respect for each other and the way that we have moved together to this, to this new beginning. At this time, Clint, you are the first one on deck.
It's a privilege of going first, is I don't have to repeat anybody. Everyone else here will have to. Thank you, guys, all the awards and everything. This is a, I think I can speak for the board as far as you talking about taking something serious and, I mean, sleeping with it every night and just, if you, if you're not careful, if you don't have your priorities right, if you don't have your foundation in the right place, it can overwhelm you, the responsibility. And I'm not an architect, I'm not an educator, but our job as a board is to find the people that know what they're doing and then trust in them, and, and that's what we've done. So I'll leave it with that. The only other thing is Stephanie's, I thought right at the beginning of the meeting, to have the Special Olympics motto, "Together we can." I thought that was extremely appropriate. No matter what we feel, we can come together, this community, we can do anything. I promise you. So, thank you.
I want to take this opportunity to thank each one of you that came out tonight, and especially those that spoke. I told, I've told several people that a public comment to the board is, to me, is probably maybe the most important thing that we have, and, you know, we owe it to the folks that, I don't know if we, I don't know what we owe to you for putting us up here at this table, but, but anyway, we owe it to you, to listen to you, and we certainly owe you the respect that you deserve as citizens. And again, I just, you know, I respect you. I'd be disappointed in you if you didn't fight for what you believe in. I'm honest about that, but I hope you respect me, and the fact is that I'm going to fight for what I believe, and it may be totally different, but we just got to respect each other. Again, I want to congratulate those that were honored tonight, especially the Stephanie, the Special Olympics, that was just amazing, and, you know, what a, I don't know, just the work that this young lady puts into what she does is just amazing, and we should, we need to be so proud of her. But again, I want to thank the rest of the board for their comments tonight. That's all I got.
Well, as I said, this has been an emotional evening, and I too want to congratulate everyone. Stephanie has a very special place in my heart. She began, she and Jennifer began at our preschool when they were two and three years old, so I've known her all her life, and to see her accomplish this goal literally just brought me to tears, so, but to everyone, congratulations. I would like to thank our architects, our superintendent, our staff, our students, and our community members for bringing forth an equitable and forward-thinking solution to an issue that has gone unresolved for far too long. This plan is educationally sound with strong academic, athletic, and CTE components. Thank you too to all of you who are here tonight and to those of you who spoke. It takes a lot of courage to get up and speak, and I appreciate your willingness to stand up for what you believe in. What I believe in, I believe we have a solution that even goes beyond the much-needed high school facility issue. This plan, including the repurposing piece, which is so exciting and could potentially bring in some additional revenue, a new hospital, several new businesses, which to me equal jobs for now and the future, provides a vision for Davie County that allows us to hold on to our sense of community and family values while moving our county forward in a vibrant and positive way. Clearly, this is an investment in our children and in our future. One last analogy I'd kind of like to make, and I think most of the people in this room, and I'm sorry so many people had to leave, but I know we were long, you can relate to this. How often have any of us been in our churches where we've been having a meeting and the conversation kind of goes like this? We must find a way to keep our young families with children in our churches to keep us growing. We must offer programs to keep young families and our children here, because that's what's going to keep us alive. And the reality and the need to keep a church alive, and sadly, there are too many dying children, depend upon families with young children. To me, this is a similar scenario to what we're experiencing right here in this county. We don't want to become a dying community, but one that, rather, one that grows in a positive direction. I pray that this plan will go forth, unite us, and excite the people of this county. Thank you.
I'll be short and sweet. I want to first congratulate the students that were recognized tonight, all the athletic teams, certainly Stephanie Jamie, that's an awesome accomplishment. And I would like to thank everyone for coming out and showing your interest and your support and love of this community. I think that's extremely important, and I want to thank this board for moving forward. I just think it's extremely important, and that's all I have.
I also want to, excuse me, thank everyone. Can you hear me? Thank everyone who came out tonight. You know, it was, I almost felt like I was getting ready to get tears in my eyes when public comments were going on, because there were a lot of folks who were speaking who I went to school with here in Davie County, and, you know, those same folks are standing up right now for their kids, and it made me very, very proud. So, you know, and I guess that's, sorry, guys, that's what you get for having a female like me on board. But, yeah, it's, it's tough. It is tough. And, but I think after this is all said and done, and over the next several months, the thing that excites me so much is I think what we can do to unite this community, the way we can really get together and do what we need to do to make this work and to make this happen. There are a lot of smart people in Davie County, a lot, and there's a lot of folks out there who can come to the table and work on the, the tax burden that this will be to our community, and, and there are folks who I have already heard say, let me know what I can do. So we just need to embrace this, move forward. This can be a wonderful thing, and I think the day that it's done is, it is really going to be a celebration.
Like the others, I want to thank you very much for coming tonight and presenting your voice, if you stood and spoke, or if you were here supporting someone else who did. Attendance and participation in these things is very, very important. Thank you for coming. For all the personnel, students, athletes who were recognized tonight for their individual gift and showmanship and their willingness to be a part of a team, congratulations. I've had a big athletic background, so I know what possible outcomes there can be from good participation and the pats on the back and the accolades that you get or you earn. It's, it's an incredible piece of the pie. There's a lot of really, really good things going on in Davie County. I attended a meeting in Raleigh yesterday, and some of the people that were there that who knew who I was, and Dr. Harkness, several said to say hello to you, they know what's going on in the county, they know that there's a lot of good things here. Third point, I am very proud and honored to serve on this board. I have, and I will continue to pray for wisdom and intelligence and the right thinking and the ability to try to research and figure out what's the right thing. I'll accept that I'm not going to win all the time. Fourth and final thing, I want nothing bigger in my life than to contribute toward moving towards a unified county in Davie County. Like-minded, right-thinking, right-guided folks to be a part of something that causes this county to come together, I'm all for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think Stephanie said it all when she said, "Together we can," with her, with her logo, and that got her through. That's a major accomplishment for her, major, and that is a wonderful tribute to her and to the county. Michael Spielman, thank you for giving so many hours, and congratulations on your promotion. We are glad to have you on board. For all the children that stood here tonight, the little daisies that started out with the, with the pledge, I could feel in this room, when they came walking in, that each of you saw the future of Davie County, and that's what we are about. One of our speakers talked about respect and trust and going forward. That's what we are about. Together we can, and together we will. We have a facility plan, we have an educational strategic plan, we have a map that shows us where to go, and we will get there, and I thank the board for starting the journey, for voting for the journey to begin, and together, together we can. I call for a motion to adjourn. Paul makes the motion. Steve seconds. All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you for coming.